Okay, thank you. Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council work session for, this is Monday, March 1st, 2021. And we have two council members who are joining us electronically. And first up is a presentation regarding the Community Equity Inclusion Survey results. Communications Manager Amber Visenter.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the opportunity. You'll recall back in August and September, we issued an online survey using Polco, a survey tool that was available to us to really kind of capture a snapshot of equity and inclusion in our community. And we had used this tool for our COVID response and measuring kind of resident readiness to get back into businesses. And so it was kind of a standardized option that we could turn around pretty quickly and get before our residents to gather their opinions. So I really want to credit our leadership, Mayor and City Manager, for encouraging and inviting the conversations around race and equity, wanting to hear from underrepresented voices, to know if residents feel welcome, and really wanting to understand those individual experiences. I know there are a lot of conversations happening in the wake of George Floyd's death and have been ever since. But want to recognize that this is just one tool. There are other things happening behind the scenes. But it can help us establish a baseline. It's not flawless. It's not statistically significant, but really can help us paint a picture and, like I said, be that one, one tool of many that we use. So a little bit about the methodology that we used. Like I said, this was a template provided by Polco. Other cities throughout the country were using it. And it just provides that actionable data, kind of provides the report that you saw in the council packet so that we can kind of see that big picture. We issued this early August. And you'll know what happened on August 10th. So we had done a lot of outreach in terms of posting it on our website, an e-update, sharing it on our social media channel, channels, sending personal invitations to school districts in Marion, the Civil Rights Commission, members of Marion Cares, of the Youth Coalition. We reached out to Encore Cafe, really trying to reach out to all of those partner organizations in our community that touch broad section of our residents. We worked with the Chamber Medco Uptown, the Parks and Recreation Department, just to name a few. Like I mentioned, the derecho happened on August 10th, online access and access to electricity was an issue. So we were up against that when this, shortly after this had gone live. So then we made the decision to extend the deadline by a month. And so the, the survey closed then on September 30th, trying to give us an extra window to kind of follow up with those groups I mentioned earlier, but also then we were able to include it in the Marion Messenger, which is mailed to all households in Marion. We pushed it out on our social media channels a couple of times and at the end of the day, we had 316 people participate. And starting on page nine in the full report of the results that you received, you'll kind of see the breakdown of demographic information. 54% of respondents were female, 43% were male, 3% identified in another way. 64% were between the ages of 35 and 64, 86% identified as white, and all listed English as their first language. A couple of other notable takeaways, most of the people, 94%, had at least some college education and on the political front, less than 2% identified as far left or far right for their political affiliation. In terms of the response, just to kind of provide the council with a comparison, every other year we issue our community survey. There's a mailed piece to that and then also the opt-in portion. The last time when we did that survey, we had about 526 residents opt in. So that's just kind of something to compare the 316 that participated this time. In terms of our census information or the quick facts about Marion, I just kind of wanted to provide kind of that estimate of our current population over 40,000 with 41% being female and 69% of residents being between 18 and 64. Then also provide the breakdown of race with 93.7 identifying as white alone, 1.7% black or African American alone, 0.1% American Indian or Alaska Native alone, 1.3% Asian, no one identifying as native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, 2.7% identifying as two or more races and 2.5% as Hispanic or Latino. 96.9% of those ages 25 and older had graduated high school or had pursued further education. Then to kind of pull back and look at Lynn County, this slide kind of addresses many of the same statistics I just mentioned for Marion countywide. So over 226,000 in population at this point. Of course, we're waiting on the 2020 census numbers. 50.7% being female, 60.6% between 18 and 64 years of age. And then you see the breakdown of race listed. So looking at this survey, many of the questions, 19 of them, about half asked specific demographic questions about the respondent. The first question asked respondents to rate 12 community characteristics on a scale from poor to fair, good, excellent, or don't know. The areas where we performed well, 75% of respondents gave positive marks to making residents feel welcome and 73% gave positive marks to residents, all residents feeling welcome in business establishments. And one of the side notes, using this tool from Polco, they have kind of captured the national data as well. And so nationally, 69% of communities across the nation that use this survey were given those positive remarks of making residents feel welcome and 71% in the business, in business establishments, just as a comparison. Areas that were called out as needing improvement, 42% of respondents rated attracting people from diverse backgrounds as poor or fair. And respondents were unsure, 18% of respondents said if we're unsure if Marion provides equal employment opportunities to residents of all backgrounds. 17% said they're unsure if Marion provides equal access to housing for residents of all backgrounds. The next section of the survey asked residents to rate 24 personal characteristics. This really looked at inclusivity in our community, looking at disability, gender, faith, a wide variety of characteristics. And so in the report that you have, you'll see how Marion measured up in, in that regard. The scale was not welcoming, slightly welcoming, moderately welcoming, or very welcoming. And then also that don't know option as well. In terms of the responses, 80% felt the community is very welcoming for white people. This was the highest percentage of any category. 77% of people said the community is very welcoming to men. In addition, older people, Christians and military personnel and veterans were identified as being very welcomed in the community. In terms of the areas that had lower rankings, 16% of respondents said the community is not welcoming to people who identify as transgender. 16% of respondents said the community is not welcoming to black people. And other categories that had relatively large percentages, when you combine that not welcoming and slightly welcoming response include people of Islamic faith, people who are lower income, people who are not US citizens, and people whose first language is not English. In terms of responses that fell in that don't know category, 33% gave this response regarding American Indian or Alaska Native persons. 32% gave this, there was a question specifically regarding people of other faiths. 31% regarding people who are agnostic or atheist and 28% of respondents answered this way regarding those who identified as transgender. Then it took a look at community equity, asked questions regarding local government, treating residents fairly, and then did a specific question regarding law enforcement. And so these numbers show the positive ratings. Anytime respondents answered good or excellent, 69% said local government treats residents, all residents with respect, 68% said local government treats all residents fairly, and 64% said local government creates a community that is welcoming to residents of all backgrounds. Back to that national study and the information Polco is gathering, nationally, 64% said their local government treats residents fairly. So then looking specifically at law enforcement, again, numbers very similar to what the local government percentages were with 67% treating all residents with respect, 65% treating all residents fairly, and 64% of respondents saying that law enforcement creates a community welcoming to residents of all backgrounds. The next section of the survey asked residents to prioritize six dimensions of local government in terms of whether or not they should be priorities. The scale had them look from not a priority at all to a high priority with also being able to answer that don't know option. More than 50% of respondents identified these three items as a high priority. Addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences in the criminal justice system, creating a diverse, inclusive, and fair community. And the third, addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences in jobs and housing. In addition, about 35% of respondents indicated hiring a more diverse staff and recruiting more diverse people to positions of local government leadership should be a high priority. The last question asked respondents to share how they have, if they have experienced discrimination in our community. 24% said that they've experienced some of the time and 5% answered most of the time for their political affiliation. 15% said they had experienced discrimination some of the time and 1% most of the time based on their gender. And 1% said they've experienced discrimination some of the time based on their birth country. And this question specifically asked in the last 12 months if that had been experienced. So looking at kind of what's next, this information has been shared with the city's Civil Rights Commission and also the Equity and Inclusion Task Force and now City Council. This information will be compiled and added to our website just as a matter of transparency and making the information available to residents. And then I think it's important that we explore and look at future outreach opportunities. Like I said, this is really kind of the first step and really kind of excited to see where we go from here. So whether that looks like a follow-up survey or just further outreach being planned by the committees and commissions already in place. Happy to open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Questions for Amber?
Yes, Your Honor, Grant here.
Hi, Grant. Go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon. Amber, this was a fascinating survey and I thought some of the subcategories were very, very interesting. How many respondents did you say we had?
316.
Okay, all right. I, I was just quickly doing a sample size validation here with one of the online tools and I just wanted to comment, it seems that that sample size for our adult population in Marion is certainly statistically valid, which is, I think, a good confidence measure to keep in mind. So I really applaud the work that Polco did on this as well as the team that worked with them. So kudos on that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Amber? I really want to thank Amber for doing this. A lot of times Amber ends up with the things that sort of happen, we think happen magically or just, you know, she just takes care of these things and we really appreciate all the work you do. And this is, like you said, this is not the conclusive document, but it's certainly one measure and one, one thing to establish a baseline and to go forward. This is going to be an ongoing process to make sure that our city is welcoming and inclusive and a place where people feel safe and valued. And this is just a beginning point. So appreciate your work on it. Sure, we'll be coming back to you for more.
Happy to.
All of these types of things in the future. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda, there are no items that are marked on the second page of the agenda. No items marked for discussion by the staff. We'll take questions on any of those at this time if anyone has any questions. Okay. And then on page three, at the top of page three, there's one item that is not marked. If there's no questions on that, we'll we'll move on to A9. Is that Lon?
Yes, that is, Your Honor.
Okay.
So one of the initiatives that was included in this year's budget, it was actually in last year's, but was not one that we were able to accomplish, was to take a look at the city's legal expenses and make a determination on whether or not we had reached the point where it made sense for us to go to in-house legal versus contract legal. We knew we'd been on the cusp of it for a while as the city grew and as the demand for legal services grew, we needed to do a more in-depth look at it. And so Zach completed a financial analysis for it and determined basically that for the cost for around 1,000 to 1,100 hours now, that's about equivalent to the cost of a full-time employee, which would give us access to 2,080 hours as a staff person. And even accounting for 20 to 30% of that individual's time being used to actually actively manage our legal usage and contracts for our other outside attorneys, that would still yield several hundred hours more for us of direct legal, legal services through the course of the year. It'll also give us the opportunity to do some things that we would like to do that when you're using contract attorneys and you're being billed on an hourly rate, turn into $20,000 and $30,000 projects in a real hurry. Things like standardizing our contracts for professional services, using common formats for all of our resolutions. So the first step towards creating that position is to adopt the job description. So we did some research and based this one off of mainly pulled a lot of it from City of Ames, but also from other communities that have had in-house legal for quite a while and tailored it to fit what we had our needs to be. From my perspective, one of the big benefits that we will have is that we'll now have somebody who can be in a gatekeeper role for use of outside legal counsel. Right now, department heads in large part function in that capacity, but with this case, having somebody in-house, they'll be able to make the choice on, can I answer that question or do we need to go to outside counsel? So I would expect to see then some reduction in the use of outside legal counsel as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
I do, Your Honor.
Oh, go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, just one question I had, and this was kind of why I was against this idea last year and trying to be more open-minded. My concern with bringing an in-house legal person is just the access by all staff and the, you know, when you think about what legal makes an hour, hanging out in their doorway for a 15-minute conversation racks up pretty quickly. Honestly, I feel like our current legal setup still uses legal, you know, a lot of meetings where I'm not sure that from a price standpoint, that's super effective, but on one person. So Lon, what safeguards do you have in place to make sure that, you know, it's I guess I just want to preserve legal's time and not have legal get distracted a lot if we're bringing this in-house because it's such it's such an expense. For example, I just want to give an aside, when I was on the school board, even school board members were not allowed to contact legal without going through the superintendent because of budgetary issues. And so you can imagine staff was even one level outside of that. It's a lot more casual here. So how can you prevent legal's time getting, you know, sucked up by things that might not need to come to legal in the first place? Do you have any kind of gatekeeper-y mentality or are you just going to play by ear and then see if you need to put something in place just so it doesn't become a runaway train?
No, that's a fair point, Renee. One of the things I think we'll have to watch with that is that department heads would still be the primary point of contact. We do have a few staff members that because of the nature of their positions do work closely with legal, things like code enforcement, for example. The code compliance coordinator works very closely with the legal department. So the ones that already do, that would likely not change very much. But a lot of that will be dependent on the city attorney themselves to be able to just say, you know, this really isn't a legal matter. It's not something that you need an opinion on and be able to police that to help manage their, their own workload. The last thing we want is to have them come in and all of a sudden get overwhelmed with things that people have been keeping on their desk for a couple of years that are great ideas that you want to run past the city attorney. But there will be an adjustment period if council elects to go this direction.
So just so I'm, I'm clear, the, this, this wouldn't be on an hourly basis, would it? It, it would just be like any other employee of the city.
Yeah, I think if I'm following what Renee is tracking is that the use of time needs to, as much as possible, be dedicated to legal work, that it doesn't want to become a social atmosphere or something like that, that we start losing time to those type of activities.
And not just social, because I don't want anybody take a criticism. This isn't about any one person. It's more, you know, I would just hate for every department to have a meeting and feel like, hey, we've got in-house legal, let's invite legal to our meeting just in case something comes up type of mentality. I get that this person will be salaried. I looked at, you know, the arrangement and the description. What I want to keep from happening is the need to outsource legal because our own internal legal is so now tangled up in things that might not have gotten tangled up in had this person not physically been located with us or just that kind of situation. That's all.
That makes sense. Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I, I mean, I understand Renee's point totally. So I think a lot of that is going to have to come down to the individual that, that is hired to make sure they're keeping that door only open for those matters that are appropriate for city matters. Because you can not only get sucked into a lot of other meetings that are probably not necessary to have the city attorney at, but I think in my background and, and, and a lot of times where I've been involved with income taxes, it'd be very easy for somebody to want to step into that individual's office, maybe get, want to have a little legal advice or opinion on a personal matter. So again, those aspects of that, I think, are important to make sure they're managed correctly, but some of it will be up to Lon. Obviously, a great deal of it will be up to the individual themselves to make sure they're managing that and being willing to basically say that's not an appropriate city matter. You have to take that up with somebody else or something, just, just to make sure they manage that, their time themselves effectively. So I understand Renee's point.
Okay. Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Lon, I just, I'm looking at the essential job duties and work performed statements in, in the drafted job description. Are those pretty consistent with the scope and span of work that is currently performed by our attorney?
Did you have some specific ones that you wanted to call out, Grant?
No, I'm just, in, in general, is, is the job duties and work performed as delineated in the job description, is that consistent with the span and scope of work that is currently done by our attorney?
Yeah, there's a few things in there that are a little bit different. For example, things like responsible, being responsible for the management of the legal budget. Our legal budget is very limited and you know, when they're coming in, I'm not anticipating we're going to be, there are going to be significant changes to that. But that would be managed out of my department now rather than being managed by an attorney because we don't have contract folks managing our budget.
Right. Okay, yeah, clearly on that one. Okay. But otherwise, the, the legal endeavor is essentially the same.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Okay, so at this point, we would, this is only just receiving and filing the job description?
Yeah, there's still additional steps. There, we don't have a, the council has been to adopt a salary range for the position. We'd have to get ready to, to do the search. There are still several steps that would have to be done. And then this one would be a contract, an internal contract position, much like the department heads. So that would also have to come back to the council for approval.
The employment contract?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is that clear for everybody? All right, next is the audit report.
Yes, Mayor, I'm City Council. Good evening. So due to our population size, we are required to have an annual audit of our records. And this, this is just, this is the fiscal year 20. So this is from July 1, 2019 to June 30 of 2020. This was also the first year that we had to have an additional audit on our federal awards because we met the threshold for the first time. And so we do have a contract with Hogan Hansen to perform our audit services. And there was a link to a short presentation from Jennifer Decker in the council memo. I hope that the council members managed to have a, listen to that. And I believe that Jennifer is actually on the call to answer any questions. So I just want to introduce Jennifer Decker from Hogan Hansen. So I just want to introduce Jennifer Decker from Hogan Hansen, if she's there.
I'm here.
Hey, Jennifer. So I just wanted to open up to any any questions that anybody had about the audit report from this past fiscal year.
Okay. So Jennifer doesn't have a presentation, it was just, we're just taking questions?
Yes, it was in the memo with the link, so.
Previously, we've had a presentation at the council meetings. I'm just making clear that that's not, we're not going to get that. We're just, we're just asking questions from the presentation that was electronic.
Correct.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Jennifer or for Brian? Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, first of all, what what Brian is referring to, I did try to open that up, then it required a passcode. To get into it.
So, yeah, so there was a passcode in the memo also, Steve. I apologize if that wasn't clear.
I overlooked it, Brian, so that's my mistake. What I would like Jennifer to do, either you or Jennifer, is just to kind of walk through some of the aspects. To me, an audit report has, at least all the audit reports I was ever involved in. One of the key things that the board should look at, in this case, I believe the city council should look at. Is what I would call the management report, or in this case, are the reports in the back of the audit report. Particularly the findings and question cost.
Well, I can, I could just go through it real quick. I mean, it was just a six-minute presentation. It was just if you didn't want to sit and listen to me talk, you can do it. I, it's fine, I can, I can just go ahead and and do it. It's, it's not, no big deal. So the highlights of the two thousand twenty audit. Those present your financial statements on the accrual basis of accounting, which is different than the cash basis of accounting. Used by the city throughout the year. I say this every year, but I just want to make sure that you know that. And, you know, I would, I'll start over and just say thank you all for letting me come to your Zoom meeting today. This is, this is fun. And we did issue an unmodified opinion for the year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty. Overall, the city is in financially good condition. The governmental fund balances, which are your general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund and special revenue funds. Increased by approximately four point nine million dollars for the year. Your general obligation debt increased by eight point two five billion. As of June thirty, two thousand twenty, the general fund, which is the chief operating fund of the city, had a balance of fourteen point four million. The total expenditures of the general fund for the year were approximately twenty-two point five million dollars. So that is a good ratio. The city's total business type activities net position increased approximately one point nine million. The city's business type activities are your sewer rental, sewer rental replacement, city communication and utility, solid waste, solid waste replacement. Urban forest utility, urban forest replacement and your stormwater management funds. The city's financial statements also include data of your component units, which are the Marion Water Department, Friends of the Marion Library and the Foundation. Marion's Park and Rec Foundation, as well as the Marion Firefighters Association. And even though these entities are legally separate, since the city is financially accountable for the organizations. And their relationship is such that exclusion from the financial statements would cause the financial statements to be misleading or incomplete. We have therefore included them. From your note disclosures in notes sixteen and seventeen of the report. I just want to bring your attention to commitments, contingencies and subsequent events, which we've described there. A particular interest to readers would be the potential impacts of the pandemic, as well as deracial losses sustained by the city of Marion. As Brian mentioned earlier, the city expended over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures. So therefore, we had to do an audit, a single audit. Page seventy-four of your report details the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And this year, the major federal program was the disaster grants for presidentially declared disasters. For dollars expended under the Iowa COVID nineteen local government relief fund, say that five times fast. Those were reimbursed seventy-five percent by federal dollars and twenty-five percent by state dollars. And our audit report over the major federal program is listed on pages seventy-seven through seventy-nine. During our audit, which is what Steve was referring to, we are required to report any internal control deficiencies. On pages eighty and eighty-one, those findings are summarized. We noted two material weaknesses in regards to segregation of duties and financial statement preparation. And both of these comments are the same as they have been in prior years. We also are required to summarize our findings over statutory reporting. These are found on pages eighty-one and eighty-two of the audit report. And I'll go through those here. Disbursements did not exceed the amounts in the certified budget. There were questionable expenditures noted that we believe may not meet the requirements of public purpose. As defined in an attorney general's opinion dated April twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-nine. Since public benefits derived have not been clearly documented. The expenditures we noted are listed on page eighty-two and include a flower arrangement as well as some meal expenses. We did note that it is possible that these expenditures could meet the test of serving a public purpose. However, they are. Subject to close scrutiny. And the line to be drawn between a proper and an improper purpose is very thin. No expenditures of city money for travel expenses of spouses of city officials or employees were noted. There were no business transactions noted between city and city officials or employees. There were no transactions noted between the city, city officials or city employees with restricted donors and compliance with chapter sixty-eight B of the Code of Iowa. Surety bond coverage was in accordance with statutory provisions. There were no transactions noted that we believe should have been approved in the council minutes but were not. The council minutes were published in accordance with the Code of Iowa. We noted no instances of non-compliance with deposit and investment provisions of chapters twelve B and C. The city complied with the provisions of the revenue bond indentures and with provisions of tax increment revenue bond issues. The annual urban renewal report was properly approved and certified to the Iowa Department of Management. The city completed and filed its June thirty, two thousand twenty annual financial report by December first as required by chapter three eighty-four. And that sums up that. But if the citizens are interested in reviewing a copy of the audit, you can obtain one from the finance department or from the Iowa State Auditor's website. There's your six minutes bill.
Okay, thank you so much.
And just to say that the audit report is also on the city website under the finance department section under reports.
Thank you.
We tried to be too technologically advanced for you today, so that's fine.
Any, any questions? I think it's important to have the summary, I think, just for the the public record and all that. So. Any, any questions?
Yes, your honor, Grant here.
Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Jennifer, on the segregation of duties.
Yes.
I think you said that was a recurring finding.
Yes.
What, can you give a little bit of context or additional characterization as to? What's falling into that recurring finding?
So there's a cost benefit ratio to having additional staff on hand to make sure that there are adequate segregation of duties. So you have staff that perform conflicting things. However, there are mitigating controls. So, you know, there's not one process within the accounting system that goes from start to finish without somebody touching it also. However, you don't have enough people touching those transactions to get rid of the finding. So it's really just a matter of cost benefit. You could, you know, hire two additional staff people and get rid of the finding. However, does that make sense within your budget? Probably not. And about every city in Iowa has the same finding. So it's not, it's not anything that is unusual.
So is it possible to remediate that condition satisfactorily by additional policy? Requirement and or admin. Formulation of targeted administrative controls?
It would be very difficult to get enough. Enough administrative policies in there to negate the finding. There is, it's a rather small finance department. It's, it's not unusual. I don't think it's anything anybody should leave sleepover.
Okay, thanks for that additional bit of clarity, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks for those clarifications. Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I can say based upon my CPA days, a finding about a segregation of duties is in a very high percentage of those audit reports. I'd like to just get clarification on the two expenses that were noted in the report. On the schedule of question cost on the top of page eighty-two. Again, in the private industry, those types of expenses are very common and recur all of the time. And then you kind of referred to the general's opinion that goes back to nineteen seventy-nine.
Right.
Can I have, do we know what those were used for, why they were done? First of all, I'm not, again, so I think they're very, I'm sure they're, I don't want people in our city to think there's a lot of money being spent unwisely. So to me, these seem to be. On the, on the high side, on the top side, probably pretty typical expenses incurred. So can we at least discuss briefly why those were done and why, why you feel those are potentially unwarranted expenditures?
It's not our opinion, it's the attorney general's opinion. And so as the auditor, we have to. Identify expenditures that do not meet the attorney general's opinion. However, I mean, how, if you feel that they're correct, and I, like I said, they could be proper expenditures. It's just that the line to be drawn is thin. And within our sampling, those were the ones that stood out that didn't meet the attorney general's opinion.
Well, I personally don't know if they're correct because I've never looked at the attorney general's opinion. Don't know how, what they were used for. Well, the various restaurants, that's pretty well identified, the flower arrangements, so I don't know what those were used for.
I'm sure it was a flower arrangement for probably a funeral or something of that nature. I don't have the work papers in front of me, Steve, to go back and look at that.
Yeah, and to just provide a little bit of additional context on that. The, the city does have policies on the books that define those as an acceptable public purpose. The attorney general's opinion just says that these might not be. But the city of Marion has policies on the books that do do that, so like the flower arrangements. That's in the personnel policy, I think, is two point one oh, that we would provide flower arrangements for bereavement or for for funerals.
Right.
So I think that's a key question I was gonna, I had at the top of my page here is do we have a policy with the city that supports these type of expenditures? And while they may be a little bit different from the attorney general's opinion, based upon how they were used, I guess I'm comfortable with with that piece of it.
Yeah, just like I said, we have a duty to let you know what we found that doesn't meet either Code of Iowa or Attorney General's opinions. And yes, the city does have a policy on hand. Which, you know, I can't tell you I agree with the findings, I just have to report the findings.
Well, I typically do not agree with too many. Opinions that are forty-one years old.
I would agree with you, but again, I'm here to, I'm here to be the person, yeah, I'm here to be the person that tells you everything you do wrong, so.
I understand, thank you.
Jennifer, I have a question. It's my understanding that there were some findings that had been in past reports that. Were not in this report.
Right.
So we were able to.
So that means that they were cleared, yes.
We were able to clear some exceptions that have been regular exceptions in our past reports.
Correct, correct.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Okay. Thank you, Jennifer, we appreciate it.
No, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it as well.
Okay. There's nothing further on the audit report. We will move on with the rest of the items, A eleven, A twelve, those are not marked. If you, anyone has any questions on those? So we'll move on to public safety. We have one item that is marked. Welcome, Rhonda.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So this is the resolution that approves a memorandum of understanding with the police union. For a lead communications operator assignment and then compensation for that position. There's just, there's multiple levels of duties with, within the communication center. And it's become very apparent with a lot of the things that have happened over the last year. On how much time and effort it needs to, what needs to be on what level. We're feeling the need to have someone on the floor level, considered on the floor level. Right, working with the dispatchers and being able to be a supervisor, have some supervisory. Aspects that they can. Pitch in and help out and make some decisions if I'm not there. And take care of some of those, those things that happen instantaneously. And as well as giving me the opportunity to then be able to do some. Strategic planning, some, some long-term goals for the communication center itself. So we're trying to just put another, another level of supervisory supervision in there in the communication center. We had had this a couple of years, a couple of years ago, it had expired, the MOU had expired. And we're asking to get that reinstated back in. Good questions, too.
Why, we said it was two years, we had it two years ago?
We had, yes, it had been approved and I think the MOU had an expiration date of June of two thousand twenty.
Okay, so why didn't we renew it prior to now or?
I, I believe that it kind of got bypassed within the contract, so we're just asking for a renewal on that.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Rhonda? Grant and Renee, you'll have to forgive me, I don't have my computer to see if you're raising your hand to ask questions. So just let me know if you have a question, okay? Any questions for Rhonda? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to under parks, there's one item, and it's not marked for discussion, any questions on that item? Page four, under engineering, none of those items are marked for discussion. Any questions on those? Okay, moving on to page five, items E eight and E nine are not marked for discussion. Anyone has questions on those? We'll take them now or we'll move on to E ten if there's no questions. Okay, E ten.
Yes, your honor, so E ten is a contract with Shoemaker and Holland for them to provide both the construction administration. Which is the bookwork behind the scenes and the inspection services, which is actually seeing the construction project being built. And this is for the CMAR phase four, which is the bridge over Marion Boulevard.
Okay. Questions? All right, E eleven.
So E eleven, as a portion of the Seventh Avenue design, we had to do an archaeology study. And as part of that study, there were some artifacts shown there on the screen that were found. And so we did reach out to the Marion Historic or Heritage Center and they would like to have those to display. So because they are public property, this is a resolution approving of the disposition of the property and then donating them to the Marion Historic Heritage Center.
Where exactly were these items found?
So there's a map, if you actually look at the report that's included, but most of it was in the park in Uptown.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, Mike. Community development, there are two items on page five that are not marked. And the remainder of that. the remainder of that section on page six is also not marked. Any questions under community development? All right, library has one item, which is also not marked for discussion, any questions on that item? Okay, moving on to the second part of the consent agenda, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor, Pro Tem.
Okay, it looks like municipal airport land donation. Is that you, Lon?
Yeah, the city of Marion received a proposal from Lux Air Aviation to potentially donate some of the property that they own out around the airport to the city of Marion. And so what we were asking the council to do was to refer this over to the Marion Municipal Airport Committee for study. We have had some conversations with firm that has given us a scope that they'll be considering as well for providing some airport consulting services. And this, I would anticipate, this would be one of the early projects that they would work on, on behalf of the city.
Okay, questions, discussion?
I would also say that just for the benefit of the council members, if you do have other questions or things that are raised by your review of this, if you would forward them to me, we'll make sure that those go to the committee as well.
Grant, I see you've unmuted, do you have questions?
I do, you're very perspective on that. I'm, Lon, I guess the question is, would, would it be your expectation that the airport committee take some technical review and output from the consultant if as they review this particular matter in terms of holistic airport operations and layout and other various elements?
Yes, and then I would anticipate then that they would make a recommendation to the city council for action on the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Hey. Looks like we've got one more that's not marked, under engineering, any questions about that one? Okay, I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Under the regular agenda, administrative services, the first item is marked, which is a public hearing on twenty-twenty-one multi-residential housing urban revitalization area. Welcome, Emma.
Your honor, on Thursday, we'll have a public hearing on proposed designation of the Green Park Apartment Living Site as a multi-residential housing urban revitalization area. This is the Marion YMCA Alt Site, a brownfield, and it falls under an urban renewal area. Proposed development plan is going to be a multi-residential apartment building, three buildings, and staff is recommending designation to allow the city to incentivize the development through tax abatements. Site met all the criteria for designation identified in chapter four oh four, Code of Iowa, and the action is still consistent with our economic development policy, and the staff sees the development as the highest and best use for the site, and also it needs or address a gap in the community, which is high-density, multi-residential housing development.
Okay, I'm gonna have Mayor Pro Tem take the questions for this.
Okay, questions, discussion? Well?
How will this affect the residential homes that are already in that area? Or will it affect them at all?
Just the site. It's just the YMCA site that is going to be designated as urban revitalization area, and I think it was recently rezoned to a planned development residential.
Sure, but the green area.
The green area.
I mean, there's residential homes in there, how's that? Will this affect them at all?
The green area is the urban renewal area, which is the central corridor. This is a district within that, so the, the district is outlined with a red outline. So just that site.
Sure.
Now, there won't be any impact to the residential around it, will? This is, if you think of it as a sub-district inside the larger one, the urban revitalization area has to go into an urban renewal area. So we have the overlying urban renewal area, and then we'll create this revitalization district inside of it. But it will only affect that property itself.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, because I'm sure there'll be some of those residents in there might have a question. They see their home in that green area, then what's happening? So, thank you.
So, yeah, being in that area actually helped the site meeting the criteria for designation.
Other questions? Okay, I don't think we have any other questions, thank you.
That takes care of A one through A three?
Yes.
Thank you. A four.
Next item is related to our capital project financing. For debt management, our strategy is trying to minimize interest costs. So we do issuance on an annual basis. This is our spring issuance, twenty-twenty-one A, new monies, and twenty-twenty-one B is a refunding of existing bond, an urban renewal bond. Will be combined together. Nick, if you, forward. We are on track in terms of schedule. On February eighteenth, we had our Moody's call, a discussion regarding our rating and our position. And also, we had, we held a public hearing on this issuance. And we did publish our purpose statement to potential buyers, and on Thursday, we'll be coming back to council with the tally of the bids, and we will be recommending the winning bid to you. And our financial advisor will be presenting those, too. And after that, we'll be authorizing a resolution on the eighteenth meeting, and we'll be working after that on finalizing documents to close on April first. If you can. So the rating results came back, and they were published. Came back to be really good, we are maintaining our double, double A one rating despite the pandemic and the derecho. It, it looks really good, it speaks to the market confidence in our organization and in our leadership. I wanted to highlight the strengths identified in that report, which is our growing tax base, that our economic development prospect and confidence, market confidence, and potential investment in the city. Also looked at our financial operations, they, their comment that we have stable financial operations with ample reserves. This has really helped our rating, how well managed our financing, or and then our fund balances and the liquidity. Overall, it speaks to our overall financial policy. Forward. To put it in perspective, this is the scale that Moody's use. We are just below the perfect rating, triple A. Where we at currently in terms of debt, we are at sixty millions with the proposed issuance seven point four, and the refunding, we will be arriving at seven point seven million, this is still forty-five percent of our statutory debt limit. We are still going to have a sixty, eighty-six point four million in capacity. Again, this financing is to support capital projects, this is a list of projects that will be supported by this issuance. I'll take any questions if you have any. Most significant one is the library and the Seventh Avenue improvements.
Okay, any questions? Steve, go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to comment on the Moody's on our city's bond rating of double A one. Again, that is an excellent rating, I think city and the staff worked very hard to maintain that, and if I recall correctly, I think, isn't there only a couple of cities in the state that have a better rating?
Yes.
So, I mean, we are at the top, almost the top, so this double A rating is very important. I think for people to understand, that's gonna result in cost savings. It allows us to have lower interest rates on our bonds, it allows us, it allows us to buy back bonds and result in cost savings in the future as well, so that double A one rating, again, takes a lot of work to maintain. And again, to me, that is one of the most important things that we do.
Because of, last year at least, there were three cities that had a higher rating, and maybe two others that shared the rating, the same rating as we had, so including Cedar Rapids. So we're definitely in the top, top echelon of cities in terms of our bond rating, and that does speak highly to the staff and the hard work of everyone to maintain that, and it also says a lot that in this, here with the stresses that we've had with pandemic and derecho, that, you know, that we're able to maintain that, so.
Yeah, definitely, given the uncertainty in the market, this is really good.
It signifies confidence, I think, in the strength of our, our city finances, the strength of our team and the leadership and the outlook, I think, you know, of what's expected for the city, so. Any, any other questions on this? Okay, thank you. A six is marked for discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, so the city has been using contract services specifically for union negotiations for quite some time. As a matter of fact, we had adopted a contract for twelve thousand per year with Ray and Associates back in nineteen eighty-nine. But then, as Gary Ray, who was the owner of the business, started to scale back, he did a subcontract with Lynch Dallas to start taking over that work with several of his clients, and Marion was one of those clients. And we've reached the point that Gary is now completely out of that business, his firm isn't doing that kind of stuff anymore. So rather than continue to do it through one firm as a subcontract, it made more sense to switch over and just do a direct contract with Lynch Dallas. Their firm's been handling this now for several years, they do a good job for us, and so we just want to clean it up, modernize it, and switch it over to a direct line with them.
Okay, any questions on that? Comments?
Let's say that if you take a look at the term of the contract, it's still the same price that it was from nineteen eighty-nine, so I think that's doing pretty darn good.
Okay, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to public services, there are two items that were not marked. Any questions on those? Okay. Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Just, just a general question, maybe for Ryan, and kind of maybe a question on how this weather, and with the warm weather that we're hitting right now, how that is, might give us an update on how that might affect the remaining cleanup of the waterways? So obviously, a lot of areas are getting wet and muddy, so is this gonna delay it quite a ways into the spring, so if you can give us an update on what to expect?
Yeah, the weather, right now, the frost is coming out of the ground, so that's a concern, so you're not gonna see a whole lot of activity in the waterway, but you'll see us collecting debris where they've already worked.
Okay.
However, we are extremely ahead of schedule. We will be done probably with Indian Creek Waterway in the next few weeks. We're gonna jump over to Squaw Creek and Dry Creek, and we're thinking April will be done. And so we're ahead of schedule, but we're gonna cross our fingers, because with the frost and the ground the way it is, it could go either way right now, so.
All right, well, that sounds good, better than I expected.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's been significant improvement on the Indian Creek waterway, just, and they see those piles, and then now they're starting to remove them, and, yeah, so. It's great. All right. There are no further questions on the public services items, we'll move on to engineering. First item is marked.
Yes, Your Honor, so the first three items, the first one will have a public comment period, so it's similar to a public hearing, just a different format for the oversized overweight truck permit policy. And then E two will actually be the last reading of the amendment of the ordinance. And then E three will be the resolution approving the permit policy.
Okay. We've had lots of discussions on that one, but if there are any additional comments or questions for Mike at this time, please say so. Yes, Steve?
Can, Mike, can you clarify on E three with the permit policy and associated fees? The ones that are in that sheet that you gave us, are those at the same level as Cedar Rapids and Lynn County?
They are.
Okay. Again, I'll just go on record again, again, I voiced an opinion before that I think it'd be appropriate to have our fees in Marion be somewhat less than Cedar Rapids and Lynn County, just due to the smaller size of our city and the number of miles that, of roads that we have, so, again, I'll go on record to say I think those should be adjusted downward.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Your Honor?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you. Steve, thanks for, for mentioning that in terms of the level of fees that we set. Just for the record, I have a, I have the opposite opinion, and I think the last time that we talked about this in detail, one of the concepts that I hang on to with things like this is uniformity of potential enforcement, I'm using that phrase perhaps inappropriately, but uniformity of application in terms of setting consistent expectations for all all entities that would be subject to our fees, so if Cedar Rapids and Marion are equivalent, that just, I think, sets a uniformity of activity relative to this, this specific kind of concern.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to E four.
So E four, we had one of these similar last council meeting, so the over width, over depth for subdivisions. So we got another one, this is for Echo Ridge Estates Fourth Edition. They're requesting sixteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars. They're expecting it to be in July, and it's for oversizing of a trail. So this is just a receive and file, we allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in these fees. So we're still under that threshold at this point, but we'll see as the applications keep coming in.
So when you say oversizing of a trail, is that taking us, what would be a normal sidewalk, and then making it a trail?
Correct.
Okay. So it's oversizing it to, to become a. So it's oversizing it to to become a trail.
Correct.
Okay, just to make sure it's clear for everybody. All right, any questions on that one?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mike, so in oversizing, and I see we go from eight feet wide. Or I'm sorry, from four feet wide, four inches thick to eight feet wide, five inches thick. Does that improve the durability of the of the structure?
Yeah, so because it's eight foot wide, typically the Parks Department has a. Half ton truck that drives on it to clear the snow. And so that's typically the largest load that's on it. And so just for the durability, we want to make that a little thicker. So we're not pouring it seven inches thick. So it's like a city street, but we are pouring it a little thicker.
Thanks.
Makes sense. Other questions? Okay, E five, Mike.
So E five, we will have a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty one sidewalk ramp project. So with this, we did get three bidders, the low bid being from Hunt Construction for one hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, which was ninety two point five four percent of the engineer's estimate. It has a late start date of August second with thirty working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. And in your bid packet, you should have the complete bid tab.
Okay, questions for Mike on that one? Okay, E seven.
So E seven will be the public hearing on the twenty twenty one H M A reservicing project. On that one, we received one bid from L. Pelling at one million, sixty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty four dollars and thirty cents. It was one hundred and seven point three five percent of the engineer's estimate. The budget was one million, so we're still recommending approval of the contract. And then, as we build the project, there's some unknowns in there. So when we strip that existing H M A street off and we get to the existing street. We'll make modifications as we need to. So similarly, last year, we had to remove parts of Tenth Avenue. Because of so many patches that we had to do on Twentieth Avenue and Grand Avenue. So we'll do the same thing here. We'll, we'll modify the contract as we go to make sure we stay under the budget. It does have a completion date of no later than nine, three of twenty one, and there's three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages.
Okay, questions? Okay, E nine.
So E nine is our new pedestrian bridge over Marion Boulevard. So the D O T received those bids for us. There was four bids that were received. The low bid was from Peterson Contractors Incorporated or P C I at one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty cents. That was eighty one point three percent of the engineer's estimate. It originally had a late start in June. However, that was pushed to August due to the potential delay in steel. And so there is a concern that they would not have the steel at the right time. So we just pushed the the start date back a little bit. There's ninety five working days and a thousand dollars per day in liquidated damages on that project.
Questions? Go ahead, Will. I just want to clarify that number two brand is not me. And not related to brand construction anyway. Other questions or comments? E eleven.
So E eleven is the project calendar for the Seventh Avenue project. So this is the scope of the project. So it will start. From Eighth Street and go all the way to twelfth, and then it also includes Tenth Street from sixth to eighth. This is a two year project. If we go to the next slide. It has an engineer's estimate of six point three million dollars. Bids will be on April thirteenth with a completion date of ten twenty eight of twenty two. There's two thousand dollars per calendar day in liquidated damages. And we also have incentives in there that's up to sixty thousand dollars in incentives to both use the carrot and the stick approach to this project.
Okay, questions on that?
Your honor. Mike, on the sixty thousand dollar incentive max, that that's strictly to try to drive. To drive the overall schedule for faster completion.
Correct. So if we only do liquidated damages, as long as they get it done by the completion date. Then they don't get charged liquidated damages. What we're trying to do is if they get it done early is incentivize them.
So how early would garner the sixty thousand dollar incentive?
So it's, I would have to look at it. We set up several milestones, but that was just the max. So they could again, get it done even faster. But typically, if you want them to work overtime and have an accelerated schedule. You have to give them some kind of carrot in there. And so I believe it would be at least thirty days early to get that incentive.
I see. Thanks.
Okay, questions on that? And with this project, I think every, every week we can get, get it done early would be, would be great. No questions? All right, we'll move on to E twelve.
So E twelve is the engineering work program. So there's both the Excel spreadsheet and the what will turn into the engineering newsletter that outlines all the projects. So some of these are early in the design phases versus some of them are under construction. And some will be filing out. So they're in many different stages of the projects. The color codes, just to let you know, are kind of the employees and engineering department that are assigned the projects. We try and split it out evenly amongst the department so that not one person is doing all the work. There is about forty seven million dollars worth of work. Most of that is out of the C I P program. So we'll have another busy season next year.
Questions on E twelve? E thirteen, Mike?
So E thirteen, we had a presentation on the sanitary sewer study at the last council meeting by H D R. If you need a copy of it, it is in the agenda from last time, or I can get you a link to it. So this is officially receiving and filing it and making it an approved report. So just taking that summary that Steph gave us and making it an official record.
It's pretty straightforward. Any questions? E fourteen.
And then E fourteen is directing staff. We talked about this at the end of the presentation of. If we have an area that has an infill, for example, the old Y M C site. To make the developer pay for a sanitary sewer impact to that area. Or if there's a high density that's coming in. Basically, we would, the city would have a contract with H G R that's done our study. And then we would pay them to then incorporate the developers. Plans, and then we would charge the developer for that study. So similar to a traffic study that's done to see how that impacts our road network. This would see what that development does to our sanitary sewer. To see if there's upgrades that need to happen before that development happens. And so this will be the policy that we will write up for council to adopt. But this is just directing staff formally to come up with that policy.
Yes, Steve, go ahead. Mike, so is this the one where we talked about at the end of that presentation where. These studies would range typically from five to ten thousand dollars, dependent upon the size of the area to be developed?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Your honor.
Go ahead, Grant.
Mike, so if we, if we adopt a policy that would specify these kinds of analyses being done. With a proposed development, if we were to find that the development. Results in a negative impact on our sewer system. Is it possible to then execute a correction to our sewer system, increase capacity? In parallel with a development going in so that 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 analyzed negative impact is remediated?
Yeah, and that might be a condition. Similarly, if a development comes in and it warrants a traffic signal. It may warrant them to upsize some sewer downstream. So that would something that we would go into that negotiation, but that way we know that information before they break ground.
Okay, so the intent would be though, if there is a negative impact to. Parallel the remediation with the with the advent of the development.
That would be my proposal, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, additional questions on E fourteen? All right, E fifteen and sixteen, like no parking requests?
Yep, so E fifteen is a request on Twenty Seventh Street from the school district requesting no parking. We are recommending that this go to tech for a report back to city council.
Questions on that one at this time? Should have a little more discussion on it in the future. E sixteen.
And E sixteen is a request from the fire department. To look at Third and several other streets north of Twentieth Avenue. To put no parking on one side of the street where they had an incident where they had to back a fire apparatus back down the street. Because they couldn't get down the street because there was too many cars on the street.
Questions on that? I was com, I was contacted by people in the neighborhood also about that one. And they were really concerned. When they saw the fire truck backing out. Okay. Any questions on that one? Comments? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to community development. First item is marked.
Yes, this item is the resolution approving the Cedar Rapids Banking Trust Central Corridor review for the project at seven hundred. Twenty Fifth Street Marion. Pretty detailed report on the review of that project. This did was one of the first projects to go through the review project in the. This particular zoning district classification. As I had indicated, when we adopted this new hybrid form based code, we'd probably run into some. Issues that we need to clean up over time. One of them was a carryover from some of the zoning design standards in the central. Area of Marion, like between tenth and twelfth, where we wanted to see the smaller building. Footprints and facades look a certain way so that that was carried over to this district, and it probably shouldn't have been. So required the project to go through an interpretation. Staff is looking at a couple of different changes to this district after running a couple of projects through it. Unfortunately, Cedar Rapids Banking Trust was the project where we reviewed the zoning. Looked at what the zoning was requiring and just seen some gaps. As you can see, the building looks good. We had no issues with the proposal. However, it did require some additional processes, so it has taken some time to get the project through this process. So there was a variance request that was required as well as an interpretation of the code. The variance request was approved by the zoning board of adjustment. And and so was the interpretation. And therefore, the project is moving forward. And and I think, I think it's important to note that staff's been supportive of the project from the get go. There's just been some technicalities with the way the site lies and trying to provide redevelopment. And then existing small lot and a drive through on a corner. So I think I would applaud the designers and the engineers as well as C R V T on their patience. And assistance in getting this project through. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Tom?
Tom, your honor, Grant here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, this is just almost right across the street from the car wash on Seventh?
Yeah, I believe so, yes. Twenty Fifth Street and and Seventh, yes.
So it's an exist, the bank is located there now, and they're going to rebuild that?
Yes, they're gonna demo the building and and start over essentially. And, you know, we're excited to see they're bringing the building up to the front of the property. Generally speaking, we like to put a building on the corner to kind of create and form that corner boundary. They're putting parking on the corner. The reason the parking is there is because if they put the building on the corner. And they have the drive through. The stacking for the drive through would stack into the street. So, you know, from a design perspective, there's a whole bunch of things that get way against each other. And that was just one of the variances. That was just one variance they said they're they're going to have to move forward with. And and they did, and the and the board did approve it. So.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, F two is not marked. It's the final consideration of the. Rezoning request from the Marion School District. Any questions on that one? F three is also not marked.
One, one I, one item on that. This is related to Mr. Green's Greenacre Storage. This is the final plat for that property. So this, this does, once it's final platted, he could provide, he could move forward with this project as he's. Brought forward in the past, and I think I indicated that at the last meeting. So. I don't know if he's going to be pulling a permit or not, but as, as I've indicated, that that use is permitted in that zoning that currently exists. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? All right, F four.
So I did submit this. I didn't have a lot of time to to get into a lot of the details from a staff report perspective. It was submitted on Thursday. I think the. The representative of substantial rock is Nathan Caraway, and he's been. Dealing with the property, as you can see, at nine fifty eight Seventh Avenue for some time. There's been, a few years back, there was a redevelopment proposal for the property. But there are some challenges with utilities that are in the way and placement for reconstruction. So I believe it was kind of just a project and standstill. But obviously, with what's occurred on August tenth at the Dure Show, the project is. Well, the the buildings are basically been condemned. There's no roof. And substantial issues with the property and the condition of it, as are several in the community that were affected by Dure Show. However, the situation exists was outlined in in the letters that. There are a number of utilities in the way that are causing problems with getting somebody to actually demo the building. I talked with Nathan. He had a quote from a few years back. I think that was provided as one of the attachments, close to a hundred thousand dollars. He did reach out to somebody else to get another quote, and they said they would not touch the demo. He just reported this to me. Online or. Earlier today, that said that they would not, they wouldn't touch the building with with utilities in a way. I think I've contacted a lion. I know Mike Marklow has talked to a lion about it. There's just a number of circumstances that make the demolition difficult. We don't have a lot of the specifics, numbers and costs, but. We don't have a lot of the specifics, numbers and costs, but. In the conversation I had with a lion, it was gonna require. Three or four businesses to have to be disconnected from utilities for a period of days and a lion can't do that. Obviously, the businesses need to exist and so. They're necessitate the the owner to. Figure out how to disconnect those utilities and put them on generation for a few days or reroute utilities. For that manner, and so it's a very, very expensive project. Nathan's bringing it up because he knows. That it isn't a nuisance now and that in about two or three months, it's probably gonna be a much bigger nuisance when we start getting. Rain and and you know, we get a thaw on, so. He's submitted this letter requesting some assistance. I know he's. He's on, I think he's available for questions if there are any. So I guess that's that's just summarizing it. There's been quite a few conversations over the years on on how this is going to get demolished and rebuilt. However, at this point. The duration is forced to set the position of he's gonna have to take care of the project, so, or the property. I don't know if there's any questions regarding in this specifically, or if. Yep.
Any questions on this for Tom?
You, your honor, Grant here.
Go ahead, Grant.
So. I rummaged around and found my old a lion energy hard hat. And I went over there and I kind of surveyed the situation today. And I don't know if this is in in Mike's. Area of concern or certainly it would perhaps be in Gary Hanson's. Area, but one of the things that came immediately to mind is is those two service drops that are coming off of. Off of the poles immediately to the west of this property. I I became a little concerned about, you know, are those even in compliance with safety clearances? Above an existing structure or adjacent to an existing structure, which. Obviously, I'm sure a lion has a has a has a viewpoint on that. But I'm glad that you mentioned the. The item where there had at least been recognition of potentially providing some. Temporary generation in order for the adjacent businesses to remain powered while while this is taken down. It's not an unsolvable problem. The the barrier is is the cost. I, I guess I don't really have a question here. It's sort of a long comment. I am just worried about the, given the lack of struc- structural integrity of. Of this building and specifically the west facing wall that we have potentially. Emerging safety condition that's gonna, it's either gonna fall down or we're gonna have to take it down. And I think we prefer the latter of those two options. So I'm just in favor of somehow working with a lion, working with the property owner. Adjacent businesses to figure out how to how to thread this needle and get the building taken down.
Have we, have we ever incented demolition of a building in the past?
Not as a separate project, you know. We have taken a look at an overall project where there's a redevelopment. And you know, someone's gonna tear a building down and then put a new building up in its place. There's usually a specific timeline attached to that because the city wants to see it turned around and put back onto the property tax rolls. You know, coming out of the duration, we do have some flexibility with how we take a look at those. But that at point, it becomes more of an economic development project than it's than it is just a request for assistance on a demolition.
Is that two separate buildings or just one or kind of, is that two how, two former houses or?
I, I honestly don't know the answer to that.
You know, the age?
Not right offhand. I mean, they're. They go back a ways.
Yeah. And they're beyond saving. I assume that's been determined?
Yeah, I think I think they've been placard is is condemned. Do not enter, do not.
They're they're structurally not sound or?
There's, there's no rough, like.
No, I understand, but there were other buildings with no roofs that now have roofs put back on them. Is, are the buildings structurally not sound?
I don't know if there's been a structural engineer that's went in, but. In its current condition, they would be do not occupy.
Sure, that's understandable.
I don't know if it's a hundred percent accurate, but per the Lynn County Assessor's site, they've got year built attributed to eighteen fifty.
Yeah. Yes, I personally have a reservation about incenting. Tearing down buildings that are that that old or that. Of that nature, of that historic nature. Oh, chief, you have something to add?
Yes, your honor, thank you. This building itself, a couple of years ago. There was some bowling out of the bricks along the alley side. And we questioned even then if it should be condemned. And I know that that has not been repaired, so it's been questionable for quite some time before it lost its roof. So just to let you know.
Gary Hanson, a building official is on the, is is on as an attendee. He he may be able to shed some light if there's further questions.
He's welcome to if he'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and and council. This building has been a rental on the on the apartments upstairs and. The inside is is was pretty bad before. The roof was blown off. And now with the roof being blown off and all the moisture and the stuff in it, I. My feeling is, obviously, if we were gonna do something with it, they'd have to get an an engineer to come in and. And look at it, design it, make sure that it's gonna be safe, but. My my personal opinion from, or my professional opinion. Is that the building is is not gonna be repairable. The the dollar amount is gonna be so astronomical to get the the building fixed up that it's just. Not gonna be feasible for Mr. Caraway to do that. That's his, his business and he can. Do the work and do everything if he wants to do it, but. I just think it's gonna be really expensive for him to try and do something with that.
Okay, but I'm trying to understand what the city's role is and.
Well.
Incenting the demolition.
Our our role as the building department is to make sure that the pedestrians that are walking by are safe. And the people that are going into the restaurant next door. Last thing we want to see is for something to come down, you know, on somebody. We've had the the situation with the made right. When that front area started to come apart. We we got them to put some scaffolding up with some some plywood to keep any bricks from coming down on the public. And my fear is that if we don't do something with this building. That we could have the same situation. We could have, you know, bricks coming down and hitting somebody. Nobody wants to have anybody injured just walking.
I understand the need to have it done and I I'm I'm trying to determine. Why the city has to pay for that.
Well, that I don't have a comment on.
On private property.
I I I do agree with you that it is private property.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the request that's being made. Mayor is that he, he, Mr. Caraway has been acknowledges the fact that it needs to be. Taken care of. He's saying that. It's, it's gonna be very expensive and he's, I guess, requesting assistance. He is in the meeting. There's a desire to hear. I don't want to speak directly for him. I'm just.
Well, I assume at some point there'll be an opportunity for him to address the council, right?
If if it's on the agenda on Thursday as a receiving file, I'm sure he can, he can address the council at the. At the appropriate time. There, it's not a public hearing. It's just a receiving file so he could approach the council. I believe it's at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
And it're on the agenda.
We can, we can do that at that time. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, hey, Tom, and and so one of the questions, immediate questions I have. Is the aspect about the safety of the alley side of that building, so. Are we, do we have a heightened concern that some of that wall or those bricks? May fall down into the alley?
Gary, I don't know if you have a knowledge of the report that Matt's provided or not, but I I know there's been. There's kind of two things going on. One, I think the owner realizes the situation, but is acknowledging the dollars and cents that are involved, but. To have this happen quickly is is not within his reach. We're in in our department, we're dealing with a significant code compliance issue and a potential safety hazard, so. You know, if the owner that, you know, doesn't address the issue, then we're. Going to have to and and you've seen how that happens in the past and so I think, you know, you got two. Two groups trying to figure out where to go from here. The good thing is, is we're all sitting here doing it before we don't, we have a situation. So.
Yeah, anytime, anytime you lose a roof like that, you lose the structural capability, everything that ties those walls together, so. You know, could the brick fall off? It could definitely fall off. It could come off in a chunk. It could come off in pieces. Because the whole, the whole wall could come down, the the brick, because I haven't really looked that close at it, but we sure can. And yet the next step would be, you know. You know, how how, how much damage is there? I mean, is it really? A safety issue to the public that's walking by? And without really getting into it, getting a structural engineer to look at it, my guess would be there there is. You know, is that gonna be after it rains three or four inches of spring, if that gonna be if the winds kick up to. You know, forty, sixty miles an hour, who, I I don't have a good answer for that, you know, it. Somebody with a structural engineering background would have to look at that and say, yeah, that's. Really immediate danger or it could probably sit there for a while.
I have a quick question, your honor, if I may.
No, please.
This is more for Lon. So Lon, once upon a time, you had told me about a situation where there was a. It's like a pond or a retention basin. With a development, but it was owned privately, but it, there were some potential issues. So anyway, long story short. You told me about something that the city can do in terms of. Paying upfront, but then assessing a fee from the neighborhood. I don't remember what that's called, but is there something like that? That we can do with these buildings where if it's cost prohibitive for the owner to do this. Himself immediately, but we recognize that because. Safety it might need to, could we not somehow legally front this money and bill him back or something like that?
I think in the case that like this one, for a situation like this, you'd want to have like a consent to a voluntary assessment to be able to do that. So that we had it tied to the property. You can do that through a development agreement, but they still have to then sign the agreement for the voluntary assessment.
But otherwise, if they, I mean, if they don't. Either way, they're paying for it. In my mind, either way, they're paying the same thing. It's just a matter of having to come up. With it now or not. I mean, I guess unless he's gonna claim bankruptcy, but something's gotta be done into the safety issue. The fact that we know that there's a potential safety issue seems like we might need to do something soon, but. I mean, I don't know anything about Nathan, but. Is this something that can be explored as a possibility or? Just for, just to get it done. I I'm not for. I don't think it would be fair to chip in as a part of the city. For something, you know, to to demo this if it needs to be done. I think it's squarely on the owner from my understanding of this situation. But I do feel like with where this is. You know, we have a responsibility to take this down quickly, if not repair it, and I'm not trying to repair it. But I'm just wondering if that could be a solution, if he's amenable to it. It might be a quick one. I just didn't know if it was something that we could leverage here.
Yeah, there's several possibilities. Since this one came in, we honestly haven't even had a chance to kind of get together as staff and get together with. Main Street to to fully assess the level of interest in the bricks to kind of come up with a game plan on it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the suggestion, Renee. Will, did you have something? Okay, any, any other thoughts or questions on this?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this question for Gary. Gary, is is the roof completely gone or is it providing any kind of? Coverage from weather at all? Is there anything there protecting the inside of the of the building?
To my knowledge, the roof on that main building that sticks forward is completely gone. Mr. Caraway could probably answer that better. I've not been in the building. But to my knowledge, there's, there's nothing on the roof keeping the rain and snow out of the building at all.
Okay, I I guess I was just beginning to wonder about if we have heavy spring rains. Any kind of inundation into the building and then subsequently degrading the. The separation between second floor and first floor and that that then precipitates. A failure of the the structure. Anyway, okay, thanks.
Other questions? So this is receiving file on Thursday and then we'll have more time to. Do our homework and consider it. Any other questions at this time? Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. If there are no other comments or questions on anything in particular, we will see you all on Thursday. Thank you for joining us. Meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Carol.